So this section, it's only two verses, but it kind of warrants its own section a little bit. Still in the broad category of being slow to wrath is proper judgment of wrongdoing avoids the speaking of evil, which is again back to the controlling of the tongue from the last chapter and just dealing with having a proper response, not letting our flesh jump out of, or jump in the way of letting us have a godly response or godly understanding of how to deal with things. So verses 11 and 12 of chapter four, James says, "Do not speak evil of one another, brethren." And he took the comma off, "Don't speak of evil of one another, brethren." I mean, you know, so, but he's really, he's back to calling us brethren. And so, "Do not speak evil of another, brethren. He who speaks evil of a brother and judges his brother speaks evil of the law and judges the law. But if you judge the law, you are not a doer of the law, but a judge. There is one lawgiver who is able to save and to destroy. Who are you to judge another?" Well, that's plenty there. And most of us probably get a little twisted around in some of these verses that seem to say to judge and other verses that say, "Do not judge." And we'll have to look at some of this here and how James is calling us towards Christian maturity, spiritual maturity. Again, now it's in this being slow to wrath as it deals with judging the actions of another brother in Christ. So believers have no right to speak evil of a brother in Christ because they're gods. We were bought at a price. Every one of us who is a Christian belongs to God. And so God gets to be the one who judges, not us. But let's work through James's process here a little bit and try to understand what he says and how that works with other scriptures, other portions of scripture that deal with how you deal with, you know, something like church discipline or actually judging a brother. What's the right path? What's the right pursuit for all of this? So letter A, evil is equivalent, so the evil is, "Do not speak evil of another brother" is the equivalent of slander. So you understand what he's saying here. He's not saying, you know, don't, don't make, you know, don't lie and say that somebody is doing something that's not evil. He's saying, "Don't slander or falsely incriminate somebody by our words." So hopefully that changes a little bit of the overall understanding of what he says here. So, you know, he says, "Do not speak evil of another, brethren." Don't, in other words, "Don't slander. Don't falsely accuse a brother of something that incriminates them." That's a little bit different understanding there than a simple evil word and we don't, with all the range of meanings that the word evil might mean. So B, injuring a person's otherwise good name for our own personal gain is sin. So that's what we often are doing when we're speaking evil of somebody else, especially if it's in the category of slander or falsely incriminating someone. We are bringing them down so that we can bring ourselves up. We are gaining something by accusing them of something that they haven't done. Slander. So letter C, speaking evil, speaking slander results in placing the one speaking this, you know, declaring someone to be evil into the status of being an unjust judge. So we need to understand that from a little bit here. So letter D, false accusations against the person not only damages the person that we're speaking evil of, but it actually damages the law as, because we're using it improperly to obtain some personal gain. We are using the law as a weapon or as a tool for personal gain by misapplying it to the one that we are speaking evil against or falsely accusing. So speaking evil itself violates God's law. So this is one of these catch-22s in a sense. So the moment the person who does, who does so speaks evil or speaks against another person has put himself under the law's judgment because the law tells us, "Don't do that." You know, it's in the 10 commandments. Do not falsely accuse someone else, right? Do not slander, do not falsely accuse, do not lie against a brother, right? And so the moment that we are speaking evil, using the law to condemn them, we have just put ourselves not under the law, but as judge of law. And so by doing this, the accuser becomes guilty of the very law he is using to injure another believer. So here's the, this is the logic that James is working through. And it's kind of this, well, let's look at it. Letter F, cherry picking from the law makes us an immoral judge who has exempted himself from the law that he's using to punish others. So here's the picture. The person, they want to tear somebody down. They find something they're doing and saying, "You're a lawbreaker. You're evil. You're wicked. You've done this." And because we are in, in making this false accusation, we are slandering them. We are ourselves, we're not cherry picking the law that we just broke. We're cherry picking the law that we want to misapply to somebody else. And so we're saying, "You're guilty of that." And we just ignore the fact that we just broke the law in order to make that claim against the other person. It's not taking the full weight of the law. It's only using the law as a weapon against somebody that we have some reason to think that we need to be falsely accusing them of. So James is clear in telling us, "We can't do that. You can't just cherry pick things out of the law and say, "God's moral law," or the law of grace in the New Testament, or the 613 commands out of the Old Testament. You can't just cherry pick one and say, "You're guilty and I'm going to judge you as guilty while I'm breaking a law in order to make that happen, in order to make that declaration." So James is properly calling out the hypocrisy of someone picking a law and breaking the law at the same time they're accusing somebody else of doing the same. Number two, there's only one true and just lawgiver. And we of course recognize it's the Lord God. He's the one who never breaks the law and is always perfect in his justice and always perfect in his judgment over what is and is not a breaking of his law. So because God is the perfect lawgiver and the perfect judge, he is able to save those who humbly come to him. And he's also able to destroy those who resist him in their pride. So we need to make sure, again, this is in that slow to anger, slow to speak, all of these things, we need to make sure that we are not falsely accusing, we're not slandering someone who God is going to show grace to while we are then putting ourselves under judgment in our own pride. And so we've just, you know, in the flesh, we think we've had some kind of victory. In the spirit, we've completely lost the battle, okay, by this false accusation and speaking evil. So letter B, since God is the perfect lawgiver and the perfect judge, who are we to judge another in our sinful pursuits of pleasure and self-gratification? Again, this is all looking internally. It's all about the mature believer not finding ways to win battles of the flesh and lose battles of the spirit, but to actually humbly and properly submit ourselves to God. And so this is what James is talking about. And that's why I think it's so important in these two verses to recognize he's not talking about a true claim of transgression or true claim of sin. He's saying he can't falsely accuse somebody. You're lying in doing so. You're breaking God's law by falsely accusing them. And you are tearing them down. And you're trying to build yourself up. But again, it's the exact opposite of what you think from God's eyes and God's perspective. So letter C here under number two, note, "This does not mean that believers are not permitted to speak the truth in love or to even properly and righteously judge as we are commanded to do." There's multiple places in scripture that we are called to judge. I suppose, I didn't put these in here so they're not on, going to be on the screen, but we might as well take a look at a couple of these or both of them.
Is judging would be the discernment of a situation?
Yeah. Right. So let's, I mean, let's take a look here. So at Ephesians 4, Bible's hard, hard, hard to get to where I'm going here, but Ephesians 4. I just want to point out that this is, so James is not saying, "We're not called to speak the truth." We're not called, we are called to speak the truth. He's saying it can't be a lie against somebody. So Ephesians 4:15 is where we get the verse, "Speaking the truth in love, that a person may grow up in all things to him who is the head Christ." So if someone is doing something, if, so, I mean, you know, you use any example you want. If somebody's a bank robber, I can say, "So you robbed a bank and you confess to me that you robbed a bank? I can speak the truth in love and say that, that, God calls that a sin. You need to go back to the bank. You need to restore the, the money that you've stolen. You need to confess to the police. You need to pay for your crimes. God is calling you to be just." That's speaking the truth in love about what's going on. Or somebody commits adultery or whatever else. Speak the truth in love. So we are called to speak the truth. James is talking about lying and slandering and speaking untrue statements in somebody's actions. Because what we want to do is speak the truth in love so that a person can grow up in their faith in Christ. And so we are called to that. John 7:24. One more page here. All right. So John 7:24 says, "Do not judge according to the appearance, but judge with righteous judgment." Do not judge according to appearance, meaning don't judge based on how the world views a situation. Don't judge and say, "Well, this person is, you know, is a pastor, so I'm going to let him get away with it. But if this person over here is, you know, out of a job and unemployed, you know, they're unemployed and they, you know, this, that, the other thing. They have all tattoos and piercings or whatever. And so I'm not going to let them get away with this. Or this person's of this particular skin tone and this person's of that particular skin tone. And I'm just going to assume the worst about this and that and the other thing." He says, "Do not judge." Christ says, "Do not judge according to appearance, but judge with righteous judgment." So Jesus, his own words, he's not contradicting James. Jesus says, "Judge with righteous judgment." If we're going to judge the actions of somebody, do it in righteousness. Do it in justice. Do it in love. Do it with, with truth as the defining imperative of what we're doing and what we're saying. Judge righteously because that's what God would do. And we've already, if you're in our First Corinthians class, you know that we looked at this, that in chapter five of First Corinthians, we had this man who's sleeping with his father's wife. And Paul says, "Cast him out of the church or deliver him over to Satan that he might learn not to blaspheme," and all of these things. Okay. He, it's clear. And there's a multitude of other examples. I just picked a few, a small handful here, where a believer in righteousness can identify truth and is called to judge, is called to speak out, and is called to say, "No, what you've done here is wrong. You can't be a pastor and have accomplished or done these things. That's not consistent with the word of God." We are called, if we're going to have somebody be an elder or a pastor or a leader in the church, we can go turn to First Timothy and we can turn to Titus and say, "This is what's required by scripture for you to hold that position. I need to judge. Are you doing these things? Are you blameless? Are you, you know, the husband of one wife? Are you, you know, ruling your household well? Are you, you know, above reproach?" All of these things. And I can judge and say, "Yes, you are. You, you, you're qualified to be an elder." There's so many different things we're called to judge. James is talking about falsely judging in the sense of unbalancing the scales of justice so that I win as the judge and you lose as the one being judged. And I'm falsely accusing. That's, so that's what James wants us to avoid, not the proper application of actual discernment, actual evaluation of truth and facts in dealing with this. Jesus, you know, gives us a process and then put it in here, but you know, in Matthew 18, "If your brother sins against you, go and tell him in private. And if he won't listen to you, take a few other brothers along with you and go confront him with the facts and the truth in this, in a smaller group. Maybe he'll hear you. And if he won't hear you, well, then tell it to the church." So there are so many New Testament examples where we are called to actually speak the truth in love. James, his admonition, his restriction against judging does not mean if some people take it, "Why am I spending so much time on this?" Because so many people say, "You can't judge me. Scripture says, 'Do not judge.'" James says, "Do not judge." No, we can judge if we're judging in righteousness, if we're judging in the truth. We can't, the admonition not to judge is, and this is of course what Jesus says when he says, you know, "Who are you to judge?" You've got this big old beam hanging out of your eye and you're going to go and you're going to little, pick out the little speck in your brother's eye, ignoring the fact that you've got a plank in your own eye. That's not righteous. That's not justice. That's not speaking the truth. We're ignoring ourselves, our own condition and judging somebody else. But, so there is this delicate, difficult balance in terms of scripture that we have to always have a fulsome theology on or doctrine on. Yes, the church and yes, believers are to judge. We have to do it in righteousness. We have to do it in truth. We have to do it in love. If we do it for ill-gotten gains, then it's clearly wrong and out of bounds. If it's doing it to bring somebody down, it's clearly wrong. And again, with the resulting attitude of bringing ourselves up and all of those things. It's, it's got to be done the way the scripture defines the proper application of judging. Let's.
So, you know, so, "Do not speak against one another, brethren." I'm assuming that that means I talk to you about her.
Yeah.
I talk to you about him.
Some gossip and backbiting and.
Yeah. And judging is, "I'm talking to you about you."
Yes. Yep.
And you said that.
Okay. Yeah. So obviously, yeah, I mean, he was talking about gossiping and all that here. But yeah, certainly anything that falls into those categories is out of bounds, improper. And we have plenty of New Testament scriptures that talk about gossip and backbiting and those things that tear people down. And certainly speaking lies against somebody, claiming somebody to be a lawbreaker against a law they didn't break, falsely accusing, slander, perjury, whatever you want to call it, is clearly out of bounds. And he's clearly saying it's because you're trying to, you're trying to gain advantage by tearing somebody else down. But again, the, the balance of scales, this is, this is just doing proper interpretation. This is doing proper theological analysis. We, and we've talked about it, you know, with teaching last week and things, you know, you take what scripture says, but you, and you fully trust and believe that what James says about, "Do not judge," he means and he's correct. But in context, it certainly does not contradict or conflict with the other admonitions we see in scripture that say, "Judge properly. Judge righteously." Don't, and James is saying, "A mature believer doesn't tear somebody down in unrighteousness." He, but does not, he's not precluding or claiming that no one should ever judge at any time. Okay. He's saying, "Don't do it in an unrighteous manner."
Judging shouldn't ever make you feel good.
No. Yeah, I agree. So judging should not make us feel good. And we judge in a spirit of gentleness. We do it with a desire to restore. Okay. So Galatians 6:1 says, "You know, brothers, if anyone is caught in any trespass, you who are spiritual restore such a one, considering yourselves lest you also be tempted." We have to do it gently so that we don't fall into the same trap and the same condemnation by getting prideful because we saw somebody else fall. Yeah. Great. Okay. And then finishing out, chapter four here. So verses 13 through 17, boasting, this is now not talking about what we do to tear other people down. This is boasting in our own pride is arrogant and fails to honor God. So James says this, starting in verse 13, "Come now, you who say, 'Today or tomorrow we will go to such and such a city and we'll spend a year there and buy and sell and make a profit,' whereas you do not know what will happen tomorrow. For what is your life? It is even a vapor that appears for a little time and then vanishes away. Instead, you ought to say, 'If the Lord wills, we shall live and do this or that.' But now you boast in your arrogance. All such boasting is evil. Therefore, to him who knows to do good and does not do it, to him it is sin." So admonition, a charge against boasting. So God has not called us to be self-sufficient or to simply forget Him until a real quotes, "need arises." Okay. This is, so James, making it sure we understand here, we don't just wait for an opportunity, wait for that last opportunity to call upon God. You know, you're, there's no atheist in a foxhole. That's not what God, the relationship God is looking for. God's not looking for people whose life are on the line with bullets whizzing over their head to finally call upon Him. He's looking for us to be completely dependent upon Him rather than self-sufficient 99% of our life. So letter A, "It is foolish for any mortal and finite human being to claim to know what tomorrow will hold for us." I mean, I'm guilty of, of not recognizing that as well. Sure, I'll, I'll see you tomorrow. I'll, you know, and not, you know, James makes it, you know, gives us this kind of language. It's almost like the Lord's prayer in the sense of, "Hey, here's the structure of how you ought to speak." Okay. So letter B, "In all honesty, not one of us knows what will happen tomorrow. God knows, but I don't know what will happen tomorrow. I don't know if I'll get sick. I don't know if I'll get in a car accident. I don't know if somebody's going to show up at my house unexpected and all my plans will change. I, I don't know. I got no idea what's going to happen tomorrow. And nobody else on this planet has any idea." We can do statistical analysis and guess and regressions and plotting, you know, we can try to figure things out. But if we're being honest and we are actually showing that we are in a full submitted relationship to God, we ought to say something different than a definitive, unequivocal, "This will happen tomorrow." There's something different because God knows. So our, our mortal lives, and James makes sure he reminds us of, are nothing but a vapor, you know, a puff of air, a little vapor in comparison to the reality of God in eternity. So get your, get the big picture in mind, believers, those who are being called to mature life in Christ. This life is a vapor. It comes and it goes so fast that none of us can even begin to, to guess or gather what the next day holds for us. It's just a vapor. So get the big picture of human existence is that we merely appear on this planet, in this mortal life for a small period of time, and then life vanishes away. There's a far bigger reality that we need to be concerned with and that is well beyond this vaporous life that we are currently living here. Okay. So get the big picture first. We, this, this life is a vapor. It can come and go faster than most of us would ever, ever, ever begin to imagine. I, you know, I'll give you an example in my life. Come, it can come and go. I don't usually talk about things like this, but I'll just say it. So I was 16 years old in high school and myself and my two cousins went to the same high school. They were brothers. And the three of us were walking on a sidewalk to go to lunch. And a, as we were walking, a car popped up on the sidewalk, picked up my cousin that was on my left shoulder, threw him off in the ground. It broke his neck and he died right in front of me at 16 years of age. His other brother was on the other side of me. You know, we went over, saw him, took him to the hospital. He was dead. I, I felt the side view mirror of the car swipe, side swipe my hand. It didn't even break my hand, but I felt it touch my hand as it went by, picked up and killed my cousin. And life is a vapor, right? We were just at school, taking tests, learning, walking to lunch. And his life was, his life was over in a nanosecond because some driver lost control of their vehicle and killed him. And I was inches away from having that same fate happen to me. But God had some different purpose for me at that point in time.
Was your cousin a Christian?
No.
You know, that, for me, it's so hard to understand why that, that child had 16 years to find Christ and I think about 80 years to find Christ.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're all called, we all have our own, you know, God knows our days and our numbers. We live in a fallen world and we can't expect that people don't, that everybody lives to 80. If everybody lives to 80, then everybody's got 79 years to figure out their life in Christ. If life is a vapor and you just don't know, this is a reality of a fallen world. And this is a reality of algorithms and actuarial charts and all kinds of things that say, "No, most 16-year-olds don't die, but some do." And that's how the life that we live in. So James is 100% correct. This is a vapor. None of us knows what will happen tomorrow. So today is the day we better make sure that we are living a life that has eternity in its sights rather than the mortal fleshly desires of the kingdom of Satan in its sights. Right? None of us knows the existence in the time that we have. None of us. We can expect. We can hope. We can plan. But God knows the future. God has, holds eternity in His hand. None of us do. And so James wants us to recognize we live in a fallen world and life can change faster than you could ever imagine. Yeah.
I mean, the, the, but in reality, we don't really know where he's at.
No, no, absolutely. Right. I don't, don't know. I mean, his.
He wasn't a Christian.
Yeah. I'm saying, he wasn't a church-going Christian. I do not know what's in his heart. I do not know in what seems to me like a microsecond, what the Holy Spirit can accomplish in a microsecond in somebody's life and somebody's heart. So no, of course I don't know. I can't judge whether somebody's in or out. I can just tell you that I never went to church with them or they never called, asked me to go. I wasn't a believer back then myself. But they, you know, I, there was no, no relationship visible that I would be aware of. But I can say the same thing with many people who have, who have died. What seems like a second or a millisecond, God can use to change a person's eternity if they're willing to hear and receive Him. But again, that's just an example of a vaporous existence that we live. We all have it. None of us is beyond immortality, right? We all have mortality that we must deal with. And we must have a focus on eternity at all times. Because if we don't, something could get sucked out of this life faster than we could ever imagine. And we don't, that's, we don't want to rely on those microsecond, last moment breaths to God to come in and rescue and deliver us from our, our choices. We need to make choices, good, solid, proper, godly choices for salvation today, thinking about eternity rather than thinking about mortality. All right. So number two, a believer's response, James tells us, "Here's how it ought to be. Here's what we ought to say. We ought to reveal our total dependence on God and even our own language." So this is back to controlling our tongues. In our own language, we ought to say, James says, "If the Lord wills, we shall live and then do this or that if He allows." So if He wills on Friday, I will give a Christmas Eve service here at the church. If the Lord doesn't will, then somebody else will or it won't happen. But you know, we have to say this, "If the Lord wills." I don't use it enough. Haven't, haven't really incorporated that into my language and speech as much as James would say. It's probably good to do, to demonstrate to the listener, "I am so dependent on God. I'll only do something if He lets me do it. If it's, if it's in His will, I will certainly meet you for lunch tomorrow. I will do this. I will do that. But if, if the Lord doesn't will, how can I overcome the Lord's will? How can I possibly meet you for lunch tomorrow if I, if the Lord has in His will that I meet Him face to face tonight?"
So God willing, I'll see you.
God willing, I'll see you tomorrow. Right? And James is just encouraging us to have this. And I don't meet a whole lot of people that actually talk this way. I've met some, but I don't meet a whole lot of people that actually have fully incorporated the aspect of James's suggested speech into their lives. Most of us just say, "Oh yeah, I'll be there." You know, or whatever. I mean, we just don't, maybe it feels too pious or, you know, whatever. But really, James is encouraging us, I think, both for our own hearts, but also to show our, the people we're talking to, you know what? The Lord's in control. He's really the one I depend on. If He allows, I will, and, and He permits, then this will happen. But otherwise, you know, God, God's in control. So having a proper attitude towards reliance on God shows our humility and submission to always allow Him to have authority over all that we do. I don't want to, in my speech or in my heart, bind God to a commitment that I've made that He then, that He's unwilling to answer or respond to. Okay. It just shows my pride and my arrogance rather than my humility. And God calls us this. I can't, I really, I mean, I, in thinking about this for preparation for this tonight and all that, I can't hardly think of things that we can do that is more a demonstration in our everyday life and our everyday walk that shows, "I'm a full, sold-out, completely committed believer in Christ in His power, His authority. His everything is in control of my life," than saying to somebody, "Well, if the Lord wills, I'll see you tomorrow." And that's just showing incredible level of dependence on Him. I pray I'll get a little more humble and a little more incorporating some of these kind of things into my own speech. So number three, "All other responses are merely boasting out of arrogance." So, number three, all other responses are merely boasting out of arrogance. So the contrary to this, not, you know, if the Lord wills, I'll do this and that. All other responses, James is, again, black and white, saying boasting is sin. It's out of arrogance that I make a commitment that I can't possibly honor if God doesn't will it to happen. Knowing what to do, which is clearly submitting to God, but then not doing that which he calls us to do is sin. Therefore, James says, be swift to hear, or I'm saying, be swift to hear James's admonition against self-reliance, and then humbly and slowly speak the words of truth that bring honor and glory to Him. And by slowly, I mean, consider the words that we say before we say them, not speaking slowly and boring people to death, but actually consider what we say before we just let words fly uncontrollably out of our lips and off our tongues. And so, these are all great, you know, great admonitions and giving the Lord the proper submission of our minds and our hearts and our wills that He is due. And so, that's the end of chapter four, where I, we got one more chapter to go, and I know I can't get it done tonight, so I think we'll call it a night tonight. And we'll get into chapter five two weeks from tonight and probably finish James at that point. So I just, you know, I just want to start a brand new chapter and then only have like 35 minutes or something two weeks from now. So, we'll call it tonight a night, and we'll do chapter five two weeks from tonight. So, Lord bless you, thanks for coming out, be safe in your travels home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lord willing, and we'll see you next time. Yeah.